Good evening. The regular, there was no response. The regular meeting of the Balfour City Council is called to order on Monday, September 25, 2023, at 7:02 PM for open session. Just for your information, there was no closed session for tonight. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Here.
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Santenaz?
Here. Tonight's invocation will be led by Mayor Protem Dan Coops, and the Plenary Legends will be led by Ms. Elizabeth Oba, our Director of Planning and Building Services. Please rise.
Please bow with me for a word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening hour to give you thanks for all the blessings you've given to us. We want to especially remember all those that are protect us, our fire and our first responders, and beyond that, we want to continue to pray for those that protect us nationally. Our Army and Navy and Air Force Marines, Space Force, all work diligently to try to keep us safe. Be with us throughout this evening as we consider the important things before us. Give us the wisdom to what's right for our city. In his name we pray. Amen.
All right, council announcement, let me start off. Next Thursday, October 5, 2023, is the 2023 State of the City Presentation. The State of the City provides an overview and update on the city's recent accomplishments and future goals. I'm very excited to share the wonderful progress that we've made this past year and what is to come. If you're not able to attend the presentation, a video presentation will be posted on the city's website within a few weeks following the presentation. For more information, please call (562) 804-1424, extension 2267. Mayor Protem Dan Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fall and Winter Parks and Recreation Brochure has arrived. You can view the brochure online on the city's website, www.belfar.org, or you can get a copy by visiting any of our three parks. Also, if you live in Balfour, you should have received a copy in the mail. Do not miss out on the city's fun upcoming events, activities, and classes. For information, you can call (562) 804-1424, extension 2267. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Ray Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. The Bellflower Chamber of Commerce invites businesses, service clubs, and the community to the joint, to the next, to join their next monthly morning mingle, which will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, September 26, at 9:00 AM all the way through 10:00 AM, at the Chamber of Commerce Office located at 16730 Bellflower Boulevard. For more information, you can please call Bellflower Chamber of Commerce at (562) 867-1744. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Ray. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. As we've previously mentioned, the city of Bellflower is in the process of creating a Parks and Recreation Master Plan. This park planning effort will provide a modern vision for the parks and recreation system in Bellflower. The plan will provide guidance for future improvements and developments of new parks, recreational facilities, and programs. The city is committed to making the planning process a collaborative effort and wishes to engage the community through a series of public workshops, surveys, online maps, and other meetings to gather feedback for the plan. The next informational pop-up event will be at the Bellflower Car Show on Saturday, October 7, in the downtown Bellflower, at two, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. For more information, please visit www.bellflowerparksplan.com. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Victor. And there are no presentations for this evening, so moving on to item 10, Public Comments. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, this is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Larry Wehage. One small change, Councilmember Sanchez, the car show goes till 6:00 PM, not 5:00.
Mr. Wehage, I'd like to correct, that was for the booth only.
Ah, your booth, huh? Car show sold out a week ago, Tuesday. There are 27 vendors, there are 311 vehicles, and I have 13 judges. They will all be working very diligently because there are so many cars, and I think it's going to be very successful, so I'm inviting the public to show up, 2 o'clock, and certainly the city council expects to be there, 2 o'clock and 5:30 for the presentations, and I think it's going to be a great event. Location, Bellflower Boulevard? Okay. October 7, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Bellflower Boulevard, on the south, at Walnut, on the north, at Flor Vista, and some side streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. We'll be there.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve. I came actually to the last council meeting and presented on, I live across the street from Corliss Park on Ripon, and there were some events, the weekend that happened, some shootings and stuff like that. Unfortunately, I come today with not any better news. There was another shooting again on Thursday night, directly in front of my house this time. Picked up the shells right in front of my house. Again, just reaching out for help, guys, maybe it's time to just reach out of the box, I don't know. I know that our hands are tied with some of the bureaucratic stuff that's going on with the DAs and the judges and stuff like that. I'm, you know, I'm in the loop, I understand. I mean, I don't know, out of the box, you know, maybe a Bellflower PD? I'd pay more property tax if that was an option, I don't know if that's something even feasible, I'm just putting it out there. Some things, just, you know, maybe right away, I talked to Brian at Public Safety, he said that there's some license plate readers that may be available that we could put at the park and station those there. That may help. I don't know, cameras, some additional cameras at the park, there is some now, but they're over at the baseball field, not really anywhere on the perimeter. The gate, I live on Ripon, which leads to the bike path, there's a gate back there that's open all the time. There's somebody at the park as early as 6:00 AM and someone there as late as maybe 9:00 PM, I believe. Is it possible to close the gate outside of those hours? Maybe at 10:00, close the gate, open it up again at 6:00? Again, I'm just reaching out of the box here, just thinking of some options, you guys. That's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Just more information, we are aware of those two recent incidents about involving firearms in the area, and those are under investigation. And secondly, you hit the nail right on the head, we have directed our Southwest Patrol and also our Lakewood Station Sheriff's Department to patrol the area more often. And also, just like what you said, we are trying to curtail, we can work to curtail the early morning activities and late evening activities. So, those are in the works right now. Okay? So, we're addressing the issue urgently. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Moving on, item 13, 11A. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, Considered Possible Action, Conduct a Public Hearing to Receive Comments on the Fiscal Year 2223 CAPR and Adopt Resolution Number 23-24, Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Submit Fiscal Year 2223 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, and I believe we have Carla here to give us the staff report on that.
All right. Carla?
Mr. Mayor, I believe I have a conflict.
Oh, okay.
I believe I should be recusing myself here. Yes, I will recuse myself at this time.
Okay, let the record reflect that Councilmember Victor Sanchez is recusing himself on item All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, the city is conducting a public hearing to review and receive public comment on the Fiscal Year 2223 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also known as the CAPR. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires that the city annually submit a CAPR, which summarizes the activities and expenditures supported through the use of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Funds. CDBG funds in particular are meant to improve living environments and promote economic development through job creation and services. The funds must assist low-income persons, particularly in blighted areas. Last year, HUD allocated approximately $861,437 in CDBG funds towards such activities. These activities include the Fair Housing Foundation, which provided their services to 181 Bellflower households; Kingdom Causes Good Soils Program, which employed 15 residents; the Volunteer Center had a total of 128 new adult and student volunteers that served and benefited over 1,400 persons. CDBG also funds the city's code enforcement activities, specifically in CDBG eligible tracts. Last year, there were 635 code enforcement cases in these tracts. Currently, a majority of CDBG funds are used for Section 108 loan repayment. This loan was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004 to rebuild blighted areas and promote economic development in the downtown area. The city is obligated to make annual payments using CDBG funds through the year 2024. The city also used CDBG funds to pay for program administration and planning costs to ensure HUD regulations are met. And lastly, the city also allocated CDBG funds for Small Business Startup Assistance Program, which was carried over into this current fiscal year. In addition to regular CDBG funds, the city also received supplemental CDBG CV coronavirus funds to prepare, prevent, and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic during fiscal year 2020. Bellflower received two rounds of CV funding totaling $1,188,480. The city funded an emergency rent relief program, which assisted 65 Bellflower residents. In addition, CV funds were allocated to food and security programs, including a homeless shelter meal program, which was able to assist over 100 persons with food, as well as a food and security program, which assisted 15 families with biweekly grocery pickup. The city has also allocated CV funds to a youth family senior services program and a business grant program. These additional programs are currently being implemented and are expected to be fully exhausted by the end of fiscal year 2020, 2024, if all goes well. On a different note, the city receives home funds from, the city also receives home funds from HUD. Home funds are meant to be used to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners in the city of Bellflower. Last year, last fiscal year, the city received approximately $390,077 in home funds. The home funds are allocated towards certain housing programs throughout the city, the first being the Housing Rehabilitation Program. A total of eight rehabilitation projects were completed last fiscal year. Home funds are also used for planning and administration costs. And lastly, under the home regulations, at least 15% of the home funds must be set aside for a project led by a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO. The CHODO line item has been carried over to the next fiscal year in order to build up the CHODO Project Fund to make a meaningful contribution to an affordable housing project. CHODO funds must be committed by year 2025. In total, approximately $89,565 was spent from the home funds last fiscal year. These are the primary accomplishments of the city's CDBG, CDBG CV, and home programs this past fiscal year. The CAPR has been available on the city's website from September 11 through today, and the public notice was duly published in the local newspaper. Following HUD's review and approval, the CAPR will be finalized and posted on the city's Staff's recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence, and after consideration, and after considering the evidence, adopt a resolution, adopt Resolution Number 2344, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. That completes my presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Carla. In reading the staff report, I was very impressed with the accomplishments that the city has done towards these CDBG and home grants. Any question of staff?
I have none.
No, just that big loan, looks like we've only got two payments left. That's what I liked. Because that's been a long time, we can get full use of that, those funds again.
Right, exactly. Can you show the chart on the one, two before this? There you go. So, in terms of the rehab, our goal was six, and then we achieved eight, and we are significantly underspent. We achieved more, we did more, using less money. Okay? So, what can we do to help our residents in terms of rehabilitation?
So, currently, what we helped with was more mobile home park units, or homes, because they're easier to qualify. The HUD limits, it's hard to qualify a home, the homes must be worth, the rehabilitation value of the home has to be worth less than $635,000.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And so, we know home values are a little bit higher than that. Currently, I believe we have two homes that we're trying to qualify right now, and those would be up to $50,000 loans.
Mm-hmm. So, if we can do more in terms of the mobile homes, can we help more mobile homeowners?
Yes, we would help more homeowners in the mobile homes.
And what can we do to promote this program to them?
We promote it on our website, and we believe...
Well, we can put advertisements in the community, in the Parks and Rec brochure, make it more available to them, we could even do targeted mailers, those types of things to get it out there more for the mobile home parks.
Or maybe in addition to that, can we reach out to, let's say, the mobile home managers?
Very good, yeah.
With some kind of flyers, I think that's going to be the most effective information.
Yeah, great suggestion.
Can I add? We also have, like, about eight on a waiting list, because of the documentation that's required in order to qualify them, it just takes a little bit longer for them to get approved, and so, we do have, I believe it's four of them right now, that we're trying to get qualified.
And these are mobile homes, too.
Mobile homes, too, that we're trying to get qualified.
So, even if we have eight, that's going to be double the amount of expenditures, that's about 230, right? If you double that, I mean, roughly, and we still have 350 minus 230, we still have 120 left.
A lot depends on what they request to have done. Some requests less, some requests more, and oftentimes, as Carla mentioned, they, in the labor intensiveness for staff is equal to the labor intensiveness of the applicant to get all the documents that they need to provide to us in order to have the files complete for HUD audits and so forth. So, it does take them, and oftentimes, they're seniors, and they're basically handheld through the process by our consultant who does, who does these grants for us.
Well, the bottom line is, I just hate to see this go back to the feds.
Yeah.
You know? That's going to be the worst-case scenario. If it's not used, then it goes back to HUD, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then...
2025, is that the date, 2025?
2020, no.
That's for the CHODO funds.
The CHODO.
All right, how about the other funds that the mayor's discussing?
Oh, these funds, we will, we continue to roll them over each year, as you see when we have the carryovers, and then we spend the oldest money first, so that we can avoid sending back money to HUD.
So, it's going to be kind of layered, in a way?
Yes.
And then the CHODO, I know that we have talked about some kind of projects, is that still a viable project at this point?
That is still a viable project at this point.
Okay, so, we're not going to be worried about not spending the money by 2026? 2025?
25, and we only have to commit $74,000 in 2025.
Okay. All right, good. And then, is there a chart that shows the, because I just want to highlight this regarding the accomplishments? It's on page 11 of 52. I want to show it to our residents, how good this program has been managed. Do you have that on a slide, or?
Oh, no.
Yeah, page 11 of the staff report.
Oh, we don't have a slide for that, no.
We don't. Page 11 of 52.
No.
I mean, the progress is just staggering. So, for example, improved and conserve existing affordable housing, 130% of goal. And neighborhood preservation, 907% of goal. Public services, 701% of goal. So, these are just, I mean, huge numbers, and how come you don't have a chart for that?
You know, Mr. Mayor, we could, since we're going to promote this thing anyway, it would be appropriate, I think, to add that chart to the advertisement that we put out in the community, on the website and other locations.
Just want to show the public, how good the program is.
Yeah, yeah. It's fair to show the partners.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Don't be shy.
Yeah, we can do that.
These are, when I was reading the staff report, I was floored with all these things.
May I speak to the event?
Not yet, ma'am, hold on.
Okay.
We'll open it up.
Okay.
Okay? All right. And then, the business assistance, the budget was 150, that's on page 13 of 52, and the actual expenditure is zero?
Correct. Those are business startup loans for the Bellflower Center, and so, we can't, we can't expend those loans with the tenants of the potential food court until they are ready to go.
So, it's a different pot?
Correct. There's two pots for that money, CD funds and regular CDBG funds.
Because I know that we assisted businesses already.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, those were $10,000 grants.
All right, okay, good. All right, thanks.
That's what the federal funny money.
Well, there were two pots. Yeah, I forgot about those two pots. All right, very good. Any other question? With that...
Move to open the public hearing.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Coops, seconded by Councilmember Dutton, to open the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order. Okay, now, ma'am, it's your turn.
As a mobile homeowner, there may be a few things you may want to know. First things, at least for my manager, every time we ask him something, he says, "You have to ask the owner," because the owner doesn't let the manager know as much as they used to. Also, there used to be a law on the books in Bellflower, and I don't know if there is anymore, that by a certain year, all the mobile homes had, they had to get rid of all the mobile homes, except for our mobile home park, my mobile home park, is privately owned, and so, they didn't have to get rid of, they're not going to have to get rid of my mobile home park. So, you may want to check the rules on that. Also, for funds to loan money, I would appreciate it if they would go to those who are United States citizens, since we do have millions and millions and millions of people crossing our border, I would appreciate it if United States citizens, they would get the, they would, that would go to that. Okay, that's what I have for that, this subject.
Thank you. Can you sign in, ma'am?
Esther.
Okay, you gave a great testimony.
Esther.
And regarding the citizenship requirement, we follow the federal requirements. Whatever they require, we follow them. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second to close it.
Motion by Mayor Protem Coops, seconded by Councilmember Dutton, to close the public hearing. Without objection, that will be the order.
Let me make a motion to... To approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 CAPR and adopt the Resolution Number 23-44, Resolution Authorizing the City Manager to Submit the Fiscal Year 22 through 23 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report.
Second the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Dutton, seconded by Mayor Protem Coops, for the city council to adopt Resolution 23-44. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Victor Sanchez has rejoined the meeting. And for tonight, there are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration, there's one consideration item, item 13A. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is a Considered Possible Action, to Consider Resolution from Greg James, MMA Architecture, for a time extension, and adopt Resolution Number 23-43, and Resolution Approving an initial 90-day time extension, with an option to grant an additional 90-day extension, provided certain conditions are met, for initial use permit, case number CU21-03, and Development Review Case Number DR6-21-12018, on properties located at 17617, 1763, on Bellflower Boulevard. At the, earlier today, or actually Friday, we received a letter, "I'd like to be at the meeting, but could not because of the Yom Kippur holiday." As a result, staff is recommending that the council continue this item for two weeks until October 9.
Okay, before we do that, I just want to inform the public that in the, in last year's meeting, Councilmember Dutton and Mayor Protem Coops recused themselves on this item, because we have five council members, so myself, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez, and Councilmember Hamada heard the item before us, and we took action. And so, this time, since there's a vacancy, we will have to draw a name between Councilmember Dutton and Mayor Protem Coops, who can participate in the discussion. And the city clerk will conduct the random drawing.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we are prepared to conduct the random drawing. First name going in the bowl is Mr. Dutton. And Mayor Protem Coops.
Right, spelling?
Yeah.
Shuffle these as best we can. Can you shuffle that? All two? Okay, and Councilmember Dutton will participate in the matter.
Will?
Will.
Will, okay. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Coops, you are...
So, am I excused?
Recused. All right, so the item before us is to continue this item until the next meeting?
Can I bring up any code enforcement cases about this property, Mr. Attorney?
You may. My suggestion is to make a determination of whether or not to continue the public hearing first, or to open it and then discuss those items. I don't know if there's a representative from the, what's that? It's not a public hearing, the clerk reminds me. But you should find out whether or not there's a representative from the property owner here tonight, nevertheless.
I think we'd recommend first to determine whether or not you want to continue the item, and continue the item to the next meeting. Well, they could take testimony first, or... Yeah, fair enough.
So, the suggestion, the recommendation from staff is to continue this item until the next meeting. The date is, it's a date certain, October 9. So, what's your inclination?
You want a motion?
To go ahead with it, or? Okay.
I'd like to, after the vote, and then you want to discuss of...
Yeah.
Maybe I'll have staff put something else into the staff report for us to hear next time.
Sure, okay.
Regarding the...
Go ahead.
Yeah. Anyway, I'll make a motion to continue this October 9.
Sir, second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Dutton, and seconded by Councilmember Sanchez, to continue this item until October 9, 2023. All right.
Let me tell you what's on my mind then. So, we're talking about the property on Bellflower Boulevard between Cedar and Ramona. Been a lot later, you know, mostly known as Ray Flatabo, Lincoln and suburban Pontiac in the sixties.
West side.
The west side of the street, across from the brand-new Starbucks. My memory takes us back probably six years ago when we passed the vacant lot ordinance and it was a vacant lot. This has been a troubled property all the way from we getting it condemned and getting, from homeless dying on the property, fires. It's been a problem for a long time, yet it still sets vacant. We have a landlord that doesn't move to develop his property. In the, as we got our vacant land ordinance together, it's supposed to be, if you're going to keep a parcel that is an eyesore, you need to maintain it with some fencing, fence setback, landscaping, irrigation, to try and deaden it off the street. As you can see in town, there's a lot of Kentucky-railed fencing around some parcels. This landowner actually put fence up all the way with no setback right on the sidewalk, and I've been complaining about it for a long time. This guy can't seem to get off the ground to develop even though he has a nice project, but he seemed to can't get his plans in, can't get them out, can't get tenants, I don't know what it is. But yet, he's here for a ninety-day extension of his entitlements. There's no way that he can, that I don't think he can get ninety days to get this done. But that's just my opinion. Where is he going to be back? We have a code enforcement, we have some code enforcement issues with the way that property is in Maine with the weeds growing about the size of small people, the fence not right. I would like to find a way and have staff work with code enforcement to try to find a way that either the property owner bonds to to have this done, to make it, you know, to come up with the city up to standards to the city's ordinance and bond out for it, if he don't make it in his ninety days like he promises, then we take care of himself with his money. But I'd like to research that if we could. And, you know, we've been looking at this for a long time and how do you my colleagues feel? Am I missing anything?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, Councilmember Dutton, I think you're on to something there. I think time and time again, we've allowed or have given that leeway because of the plans, because of entitlement, because there was movement. So, I, I think you said it well. You know, I think, I think it's going to be tough in general for, with the ninety days to get it done. But the bottom line is, it's not fair for the others that we have enforced and have, you know, been able to take care of some of those vacant properties. I think it's same, same goes here.
Nothing else has motivated this gentleman. And maybe this will do it, I don't know, I would hate to
I would hope so.
Invest, you know, because it's probably five hundred thousand dollars to put the landscaping events in. It's a boatload of
It's going to be a lot of money.
And he's coming to us, all you only need is the ninety days.
Well, my take on this, my take on this is when this came before, even before the city council, because it was part of the subcommittee that listened to the presentation the first time, and I was very excited about this, this project. It is a very meaningful project. It will change the landscape of south of, south of the freeway on Bellflower Boulevard. And if you recall, the proposal was three drive-throughs and one gas station with convenience store, and then there's going to be a fifth building towards the back. But what attracted me to this development was the Sonic Burger, the Poyo Compero, and the third drive-through, which is now basically the thing to do for restaurants. They have to have a drive to be successful. But what happened was because of this, we were just kind of jazzed with this proposal and we gave him a pass, basically, for one year. That's what I'm going to show Garco, is we gave him a pass because of the value of the development, what it will do to the city. We basically did not, we held off in terms of really pushing for code enforcement during the past year. That's the reality. And so, now, our choice is whether to give the extension or not. I agree with you, most likely, they will not. But if we don't extend it, definitely, it will not. That's for sure. So, which one is the lesser of the two evils? I think, give them the extension. If they don't, then the path is so clear for them to do one thing, to make sure that they have an approved plan within ninety days from today. If they don't, then, and on a separate note, I'm not going to discuss in detail, the code enforcement is running parallel to the application for extension. So, there's a separate track, which we cannot discuss in public. So, we are not, we're basically not leaving any stones unturned, so to speak.
Mayor, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just provide some clarification? So, just for clarification, the applicant asked for a one-year time extension. Staff's recommendation is only to give a ninety-day time extension to submit plans. And then, if they meet that deadline, so they submit complete plans within ninety days, then there is an additional ninety days that can be granted to commence construction.
Right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
So, the first milestone is for them to submit a complete plan?
Correct.
Not incomplete, a complete plan?
Complete plan, yes.
That it's acceptable to you and the rest of the staff?
Correct.
Within ninety days, then if not, then basically, the full code enforcement force will be laid upon them.
But prior
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in fairness, you did vote to continue the matter and so, I think you're just giving direction in terms of what you want to see in the staff report when it comes back. So, my suggestion would be, I think, staff has direction and we're happy to craft something for you to have a robust conversation when the property owner is here to discuss it with you.
And what I would like to do is make it onerous if these deadlines aren't met. And I'm okay with the ninety days and another ninety days, but once they trip, then there's money that we, we can use to fix the property. And we're fixing it, not him.
Okay, so we're good.
And then we, you know, and of course, we work for prevailing wage, yeah.
We have our direction.
Yes, all right, very clear. All right, so that we took action already?
Yes.
We're done, we're good, all right.
Staff's got the marching orders.
Can you get, can someone get Mayor Protem Koops? Oh, he's ready. All right, next item, let the record reflect that Mayor Protem Koops has rejoined the meeting. All right, next item is item thirteen, consideration items, I mean, consent calendar number fourteen. Are there any recusals, conflicts?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from item fourteen E as in Edward, due to a property within five hundred feet.
Okay, and then just for the information of the public, at the last meeting, August, oh, no, August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting, all council members were conflicted on item fourteen D on this agenda. That's the slur we seal on various streets. Lots were drawn and Mayor Protem Koops would not participate in that matter.
Right, you want me to leave again?
No, not yet, unless somebody pulls the item, you're good.
You're talking about fourteen D?
Fourteen D.
Yeah, that's the one that, that was me, so yeah, clarified.
And I may still, yeah. Mr. Mayor, just to be clear, I may still participate, right?
Yes, you are.
All right, I'm out, no.
Fourteen D, if it's, if somebody pulls it.
Okay.
And fourteen E, Ray? Fourteen E.
E, right.
Oh, E, that's additional, right? Okay, anyone, anyone else? Any, any item to be pulled? Then, okay, I'd like to pull item fourteen, fourteen C. All right, four, item fourteen C is the renewal of the extension of the contract to operate the homeless shelter. And is anyone going to give a brief background or do you want me to start asking questions?
It is a consent item, you could, we have a representative from Mercy House here, you can fire away with your questions, yeah.
Kind of fire away with questions, okay. I think Timmy's here from Mercy House.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening, first of all, I want to thank you and Mercy House for operating the shelter now since twenty twenty. I think you've done a good job in operating it. There are very, very few complaints, and those complaints were forwarded to management and there was no feedback, so I'm assuming that those complaints were addressed. And then, just for the information of the public, a request proposal was sent out and there were two bidders. And the two bids were evaluated by staff and staff is recommending the extension of the contract with Mercy House. So, that's the background, so I just want to ask a couple of questions regarding your proposal at this time. I want to zero in on the the Housing Solutions Supervisor's position, Housing Navigator and Leasing Agent. Let me just go right into the meat of my question. I view these three positions as basically trying to, home placement, let's put it that way. So, my understanding is these three positions are three-point-five full-time equivalence position. Their job is to, to find housing to our clients in the homeless shelter. So, first question is, how many, how many placements were made out of the shelter to a long-term housing supportive, whether supportive housing or transitional housing during the past year?
Unfortunately, I actually don't have a performance report for the last fiscal year in front of me. That's definitely a question I can get the answer to. That is data that we do collect and would have reported in our monthly reports, so.
If I recall from the last report, I think there was one.
In this fiscal year?
One placement.
If it was the last report, that might be a year-to-date number with the, starting with July one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's a very low number.
Yes.
Okay, something that I think you and I can agree that we cannot be proud of.
We should be housing as many people as we can.
Okay, so my question is, we're spending here to the tune of hundred fifty thousand dollars. Let's assume that my number is correct, that we place one person to a permanent supportive housing or transitional, whatever it is. So, is that worth the money?
So, I'll say
Is that worth the cost of hundred fifty thousand dollars to place one person from a shelter to a supportive housing, whatever it is?
So, the average cost of a homeless person to the public is close to a hundred thousand dollars?
No, 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 no.
That's not the question.
My question is, we're spending to support these three and a half positions of employees to find housing for our homeless shelter, homeless population, okay? And during the past, again, if I'm correct, you guys place one person to a support, permanent supportive housing. We spend hundred fifty thousand dollars. Is that the best use of tax dollars to place one person from a shelter to a supportive housing?
I'll, I'll say that that is not a number that you said we should be proud of, and I agree. We, we should be doing a lot better than that. I'll say that the role of the housing navigators, that, that team, they're, they're meeting with the clients on a regular basis, they're doing the case management, they're doing the benefits advocacy for those homeless clients. We need those staff to be meeting with those clients, to be making the plan, to be, to be engaging with the, with the system so that they can get access to housing resources. Are they getting all the access to the resources that they need or are they making the progress we want them to? Clearly, they're not. But the, the role that those positions play in the shelter is, is vital for us to move people forward.
But if they are just talking with them on a daily basis and there's no path for them to go to outside of the shelter, what is the value of that conversation?
So, it's, it's the, it's the conversation that can move them towards
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I interject real quickly? So, I think we can all agree, there's been structural impediments to finding permanent supportive housing. And let's be clear, it's, it's all on Lhasa, not making those resources available to us for reasons that are not clear about that. So, I think what the mayor is asking is, if we agree to this agreement, if we go forward with this extension of the agreement, is there any reason to believe that things will get better in the coming year? And if they don't, would we continue to pay for those services if Lhasa is not going to relinquish any access, any resources they have for permanent supportive housing? Like, that's the real question we're asking here. So, if nothing changes, is there, is there a real reason for us to maintain those services going forward?
So, if, if nothing changes in terms of housing resources being made available to these clients, I would argue there continues to be incredible value to those positions because those are the folks who are, who are meeting with the clients to connect them to, to their benefits, right? So, if someone needs medical care, if they need to be connected to St. John's Well Child, if they need to be connected to their Cal, their Medicare benefits.
So, there's additional services being provided other than permanent supportive housing through those navigators and other folks. So, I think we need to break down all the services. If you could enumerate that for us and give it to us, we could forward to the council because that's not our understanding of it, frankly.
Yeah, the housing navigators play the case management role in the shelter, so they're coordinating the care for every person.
It's a larger role.
So, why are you calling them case managers? It is confusing.
I, I actually agree with that, there was, it's a linguistic twist that comes from, it's the language that folks have used for a couple of years, like, maybe four or five years ago, about the conversation of homelessness. So, it's kind of like an industry lingo, maybe.
No, I, I would disagree, I, I work in Skid Row. I used to work in Skid Row.
The mayor's right, there's a term of art, the navigators are something very different than the case managers. So, I, I think what we'd need is some enumeration of the services provided for the case managers and what kind of bang for the buck we're getting. Because quite frankly, if we're only going to move one person and that's all the services we're getting out of that, there's no reason for us to do that. Until things change with Lhasa.
Or maybe we can maintain one person, you know, or one half of one person. If you're, if the placement, I think what we need to understand is what exactly are they doing? Are they doing case management, management or are doing housing navigation? And that's number one, number two is, what are the obstacles that you're encountering so that they can, they can be placed into a supportive housing? Because if there are obstacles, even no matter how, how competent, how competent good they are in terms of navigating, if there's no place for them to go, they're not going anywhere.
And Timothy, you know we like to yell at Lhasa, so we're all good with that.
All right, so, so you're going to come back with
Think what I'd recommend to you. I think we'll come back with an understanding here. Mr. Ron is going to give us a summary of the services provided by the case manager slash navigation officers and what they're doing there. And then, we're going to make a decision in a very short period of time on exactly what the services are provided because I, I guess I need to know what services they're providing, I don't know, top of my head. We know they're not moving people into permanent supportive housing, we do know that, but I don't know what else is there. So, if you could just pull that together for us, I'd appreciate it. And then, what I do is I put it on the weekly report to the council.
Okay, hold on, Travis, you have the numbers?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to highlight something, something that Mercy House does include in their monthly reports to staff is the coordinated entry system statistics. So, they have indicated that there was about thirty-five assessments done actually this year. So, Timothy, can you talk a little bit about those assessments and what's actually done?
You said thirty-five assessments?
Thirty-five, yeah.
Thirty-five.
So, for every client, we want to, we're going to be assessing what their vulnerabilities are and what their, you know, to get them into CES to match them to, to resources as they become available. So, those assessments include seeing what kind of benefits they would qualify for, seeing what the, if they have mental health or behavioral health conditions or physical health conditions and assessing their, the chronicity of their homelessness, if they have disabling conditions so that we can qualify them to match to housing resources, be that PSH or, you know, transitional living or other, other options. And that's, all that work is done by the navigators.
Thirty-five assessments, okay. But still, it's a very low, it's a very low number. But still, it's a very low, it's a very low number.
But if that's year-to-date, that's from our August report, so that's basically just the, you know, the first month of the, of the quarter.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Dunn, do you have a question?
For lack of better terms, we're calling them navigators now. The navigators, is, is it, the navigator, what we're talking about here is the placement people.
Yeah. So there, our shelter case managers, we, for some reason, we've called them navigators.
From taking, intaking a new homeless person with no ID, sick, probably got warrants, court issues. And so they navigate, you know, and then they, they find, and he's not getting a, a social security check, it's an older gentleman, let's say. So they can get, navigate for the social security, go to the judge and get stuff dismissed, get ID, doesn't have ID, um, get cleaned up, get all the way, all the way in mental health assessments.
They need recovery.
Everything. So these people are doing everything.
Yes, correct.
So it makes a little more valuable.
Yeah, well, based on this change in description, but still, the numbers are not impressive.
Yeah, but.
So, um.
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead. Uh, Mayor Protem Coops.
I'm gonna message Travis. So you're looking at the current year and was it right in what the mayor said? One, we can identify one person as being discharged through the program?
That's correct, to permanent supportive housing, just one.
One placement.
One placement, yes.
Thirty-five assessments, one placement.
How, no, we've been in business now, what, three and a half years? Can you tell me how many we've placed in the last three and a half years? Or is that something we gotta wait for?
It's gonna wait.
I can absolutely look that up, but, uh, it's gonna take me a minute.
It took a while for the, to get, to get the numbers for one year.
Well, I, so how's this gonna go? I think we need some questions answered. Are we gonna defer the approval of this? Until we find out where our money's being spent? I, I'm out of my comfort zone on spending a hundred fifty thousand dollars for one individual and a little bit of backup.
Here, here's my suggestion, because we need to renew the contract by the end of this month, right? Okay, my suggestion is to authorize the staff to negotiate the housing navigator slash case management staffing level um, to what is comfortable for us, what is gonna be beneficial for our clients. And also what is, um, well, I, I will.
If I may.
I will leave it to staff to negotiate that number for housing navigator case management. If they can prove that those numbers, the three and a half, are needed for case management and housing navigator, I'm all for it.
Yeah, and I think we can report back on that and then reduce as necessary.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, I got you. I understand that.
So i- if the, um, city manager is not satisfied that the housing locator slash case management, management position are not needed, then this staffing can be brought down. Is that, is that okay with?
Travis, you got the number?
Yeah, I just have a number from the, uh, previous report. So back in April of twenty twenty-three, we did a workshop on the shelter. And Mercy House did provide a report since the shelter was first opened. And at that point, from May twenty twenty to April twenty twenty-three, it was about nine housing placements. So at this point, we're at about ten since the shelter.
So is each year, have we allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars for these navigators? I mean, has it gone up or down?
The number's actually reduced from previous years by a fair amount, actually. So it's.
Tell me per year what we're paying.
Travis, isn't that report, does it also report the number of folks that have moved on to other positive locations, or is that just the, the permanent housing?
That's the permanent housing component. So the total number of actual exits, um, from homelessness is ninety-three.
That just means they said, decided to leave. That didn't mean we got permanent supportive housing, correct?
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Is there, is that report include, um, folks that moved to transitional or, or recovery places? And families that, that were diverted?
Yeah, that was actually included in the nine.
Nine, okay.
Yeah, they consider that a, a positive outcome, a positive.
Positive placement, yeah.
But not actual, but not actual placement.
Yeah, it wasn't all permanent supportive housing, but there were placements to other areas which were suitable in some manner or another.
Yeah, they do list, um, some other statistics on here. Um, so there's temporary housing, so that was actually nine. And then, um, just to actually correct the, uh, the nine for permanent housing, it actually is twenty-five. So we're looking at about twenty-six, um, with this one placement from the recent report from Mercy House.
Hmm, okay.
So we only did one this fiscal year, but prior to that, we had a better performance. Does that sound right?
Yeah, since inception of the shelter. So if we're looking from May twenty twenty to April twenty twenty-three, it was actually twenty-five housing placements. Permanent housing placements.
Which is significantly better than one, although I'd still like to see.
Well, you can't get much lower than one, that's for sure, too. I'm not a math major, but I have a feeling.
Yes, you can.
I'll give you that.
You can give it a zero.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, Tim, is that one, the fiscal year, starting as of when, July first?
July first is when we start our fiscal, yeah.
So it's early in the year. Fiscal year, once. It's early in the fiscal.
So one since July, I think.
We're hearing that there's a squeeze on the available permanent housing slots for all the shelters in the area as well. We're not the only one going through it, but the performance has never been great cause we're not a Lhasa-sponsored shelter, so we get second tripped on that.
But if we're spent four hundred and fifty thousand in the last three years, I'm just figuring a hundred, I'm doing light math cause you said it was heavier at the beginning.
By twenty-six.
By twenty-six.
Twenty-six placements.
That's what, twenty thousand dollars each?
That's a lot of money.
Now, given there are other expectations from those navigators other than placing, but what we're looking at and what they've presented is pretty weak.
As far as direct return to the city, correct. And as far as moving them into, uh, permanent supportive housing, correct. As far as the benefit to the homeless, it's probably a little more substantial than that, but it's hard to quantify for us, yeah.
Well, you can see as numbers guys, how we're struggling with this.
There is no number rationale to do this service.
I mean, it's hard for me to expect you to defend it.
Right, no, I can't, and I don't, yeah. I mean, this is a, this is a leap of faith, a giant leap of faith on the homeless issue, for sure.
Well, that's why I think the best, the best route forward is, because we need to renew the contract as of September thirty, correct?
I think that the direction I'd look for here is give us thirty days to sort it out. And if we can reduce that number, we will, and then we'll report back out to the council on that.
Well, but how about the contract now?
I think you.
Authorize the contract.
You authorize the contract and then we'll figure out a way to whittle that out.
Just authorize the staff to negotiate the housing navigator position.
Cause we think that's a legitimate question, it's discussed, yeah.
And Mercy House will be okay to reduce that if, uh, staff determine that we don't need three and a half positions?
They'll have no choice.
Yeah, okay.
They're gonna amend the contract or sign it.
Yes.
I just wanna, I just want a confirmation.
Yeah.
Well, apparently they're overloaded. It was three, and no, we need another half. I mean, so we're working them hard.
Think we're gonna find that there is a lot of overlap position, those people are incredibly needy and we've spent a lot of time doing stuff that's hard to quantify. But we will get that report out to the council and we'll find some, of, of the right staffing that we need to on that subject, so.
Okay, fair enough.
And we'll report it out to the council, so there's a chance to do it, cause you guys know me well enough. If I get a chance to cut a contract, I will. That's, you know.
No, but, uh, this is pretty obvious that we need some help on.
All right, any question?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Uh, with the direction on item fourteen.
Fourteen day to get some more discussion on staff.
And with the recusals.
Fourteen E, uh, fourteen, fourteen C?
I think our position.
Do we need to modify that, or we have enough information?
We have enough information to do that. So I think, the recommendation, as I understand it, is approve the contract. Staff's gonna report back to the council, the appropriate staffing level for the navigator case manager positions in there.
Okay, see, do we need to pull that item for a separate vote? Or just kind of modify the, modify the, the motion? Modify the motion. Uh, City Clerk, did you get the modified motion on fourteen C? Okay, very good. We beat that to that. There's a motion.
He made the first, I made the second.
A motion by Councilmember Dunn, then seconded by, uh, Mayor Protem Coops to approve the consent calendar with, um, revision fourteen C and recusal for fourteen D. Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Santenaz?
Aye. All right, council reports. Mayor Protem Coops?
I have nothing to report.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Dunn?
Nothing to report, but I'm glad Fall's here.
Cause he wanted to wear that suit.
Yeah. Lot cooler this, this go around than last go around.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just briefly here, I wanna report out, um, that we attended, or I went and represented us at the Contract Cities Fall Summit in San Diego, uh, September seventh through the ninth. Uh, it was a meaningful discussion. Uh, two of our county supervisors were in attendance. And most of the discussion occurred along the areas of public safety and street vending. So I just wanna report that out. And then, uh, lastly, last week, I, I also attended, along with staff, um, attended the League of Cities. And that conversation was in Sacramento regarding housing. And we were able to actually have a conversation, two of our staff members were able to participate in a meeting with the governor's office related to the, um, the, uh, inequities regarding to the internet broadband in our region. So that was a great positive, uh, uh, conference as well. Just wanna report that out. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. I just want to, um, uh, remind everyone that tomorrow is a great day for Bellflower. We'll have the ground opening ribbon cutting for Edgeway. I look forward to that. That's very exciting. And, um, and I also want to kind of piggyback on, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Coops' announcement this morning, uh, this evening about the, um, uh, Parks and Recreation, um, Fall and Winter brochure. I'm just bringing it up because this is the most comprehensive brochure I've ever seen in Bellflower. In terms of the contents, if you don't have a copy of this, please get a copy. In terms of activities, uh, uh, events going on, it is lots of things that you will benefit from. And you will just, I'm just amazed with all these things, things going on in the seat of Bellflower. So please get hold of a copy. It is very informative. And with that, uh, we are adjourning this meeting to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, October ninth, twenty twenty-three. This meeting is now adjourned.